I would like to call to order the school board business meeting, September 22. Barb, could you please call the roll?
Certainly, Board Chair Hefner.
Here.
Vice Chair Potatka.
Here.
Clerk Olafman.
Here.
Treasurer Burbach. Director Buchholz.
Here.
Director Lehman.
Here.
Director Pearson.
Here.
Do you have form?
Thank you. Would you please stand for Pledge of Allegiance? That way? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And our board mission, Paula?
The mission of Stillwater Area Public Schools, in partnership with students, family, and community, is to develop curious individuals who are active and engaged leaders in an ever-changing world by challenging all students as they travel along their personalized learning pathways.
Thank you. Our board goals for 2016-17: As board members, we are morally and legally responsible for an equitable and quality education for each and every student in our district. As board members, we ensure decisions are made in the interest of all students E21 and for future generations impacted by our actions. We will partner with administration to assure all students are provided equitable opportunities to reach their maximum potential. We will participate in efforts that support student and community engagement. We will direct district efforts to develop a balanced budget for 2017-18, and we will exercise effective self-governance. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, close. We have two action items. The first is a resolution approving long-term facility maintenance revenue tenure plan. Ms. Hoheisel.
Thank you, Board Chair Hefner, Superintendent Pantrali, and school board members. Earlier this summer, I had, I was in front of you and we were talking about our long-term facility maintenance plan, and at that time, two lists were presented to you. One was a lower dollar amount list, and one was a higher dollar amount list. Same list, it's just some of the areas were zero delta. And we had had the conversation about what we would be able to put on our levy and support a neutral stance on our levy moving forward into this year. We chose the lower dollar amount and adopted a resolution at that time for $5,370,000. I'd like to request tonight that we, that you approve another resolution that actually adjusts that dollar amount by $350,000, which would make it $5,720,000. You were provided an attachment or a list of the projects that we had identified before, and there's two items on that list that we would be looking to add back to the 17-18 school year. The first would be to replace wall covering systems in the 1996 edition at Lake Elmo. It was estimated that that project cost was going to be $45,000. And when we research it further and looking at that walls, we would have, we have to reconstruct the perimeter wall to keep it like-for-like, replace the windows, that sort of thing, which increase the cost and makes the dollar amount cost maybe $275,000. The second area would be to replace carpeting in states and two houses at Rutherford. This would actually just be carpeting at Rutherford. There's an area outside of the gyms and the corridor between the gyms and the cafeteria that would need replacing, and so we're requesting that $120,000 get added to the project for that. The reason why we're taking formal action is because with our preliminary proposed levy, this is what we are required to do to levy that amount per the Department of Education. So I would open it up to questions and ask that you ultimately approve the resolution.
On the carpeting, as you mentioned, it was two rooms, for sure. So I realize that's a big sum, is $120,000. Can you talk a little bit beyond the two rooms, maybe in square footage, or?
Again, it was, it was two houses, and I have totally, that can help address the square footage.
Square footage?
What does $120,000 in square feet cover?
Square feet covers?
Even if you can descriptive wise, totally give people an idea of how much.
$45,000 in square feet.
Well, and it's like seven classrooms. I mean, it's open, but it's seven, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
For a house.
It has had the cafeteria as an additional.
So just to clarify, is a house seven classrooms, or are the two houses seven?
A house is seven.
So it's really 14 classrooms.
14. Plus quarters?
Plus, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Kristin, can you touch upon the fact, I mean, one of the things we always try to maintain is to keep the taxes low to our residents, and what the impact will, this will have with regards to increasing this amount.
When we increase this dollar amount, and I, and you'll see in my future, in my next presentation, as I was evaluating the numbers, we are, even with the additional $350,000 added, we would be looking at a negative increase, all things being equal to taxpayers in our community, I think with the exception of million-dollar homeowners. The impact is probably for $350,000, for a $250,000 house annually, my estimation would be about $10 a year would be the difference. However, it's not an increase. It's actually, instead of maybe seeing a $12 reduction in their taxes, they'll see a $2 reduction in their taxes.
So are we asking questions? Are we going to wait for a motion, or what?
We can take a motion, or you can ask.
Okay. I guess I would just like to point out, on the list, the most expensive item is at Acton-Lakeland Elementary. It's replacing the domestic galvanized water piping with copper piping. And I want to address this because I attended a Acton-Lakeland PTA meeting on Monday night, September 12, and this was a topic that was on the agenda. And there were questions about, there were concerns about the quality of the water. And I clarified with them that this was not something new. It's been on our list for many years, and it was due to an increase in elevated iron. Would you confirm that?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And it was, at one time, supposed to be worked on last summer, but because of the bond, and because Acton-Lakeland will get a bond investment of air conditioning with their heating and ventilating system, the decision was made to have the water pipes replaced at the same time, better use of tax dollars. So I think, Toni, you were at the meeting, the environmental consultant was there, and she kind of talked about the amount of piping, and it's a lot of work. So do you want to, again, speak to that, so people really understand that this is a major undertaking improvement, and it's really a better, so go ahead.
The galvanized piping at Acton-Lakeland is just deteriorating. It's very soft, and it's the iron in the galvanized pipe is.
From the rust.
From the rust, yeah.
Right.
And so the longer, or if it sits over the weekend, you just, for when you first start your process, it's an orange-ish color. And then we are going to replace it with a, actually, a plastic pipe.
Okay. And then how about in terms of tying that project with the heating and ventilating and air conditioning work that we're going to do next summer?
Yeah, and we're going to put air conditioning at Acton, so it will be in the tunnels, running cold water, or chill water lines, so it'll be down there.
So it made more sense to do, replace the water pipes along with the air conditioning systems at the same time?
Similar to what we did at Lily Lake this summer.
Again, it's $450,000. It's the most expensive item on the list, so it really, it's a major undertaking. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
A question I have is this. I'm glad, number one, I'm glad to hear you're doing the project. Between now and when the work is done, are there any safety issues in terms of kids and staff using the water?
No, no, there's not. Again, on the Monday morning, the pipes stay stagnant over the weekend to flush it out. That's been established.
And you removed all the drinking fountains that are within the classrooms and just replace those with sinks for, like, paint and washing hands?
Yes.
Right.
And I think we all received information from Superintendent Pantrali at facilities, including yourself. So I think we've already been briefed on all of the, kind of the steps that the district is going through to eliminate that, and that there is no risk to any students.
Is that true? There's absolutely no risk?
Absolutely no risk? I mean, that's a.
I think what the environmental consultant talked about was, they can't, they can't preclude the water sources students have had before they even come into the building. There's no control over all of the water that the students intake, so.
How about in the building?
In the building? There's never going to be no risk. I mean, but the risk has been very minimal. It's minimized to, you know, your average, everyday public, or even private home.
I just, oh, sorry. I just wanted to clarify. Kristen, when you were before us last time, there was a question about, I think some confusion of people thinking, oh, $5 million that the district is spending on these new projects, in addition to the bond, in addition to other capital expenditures that we're going through. So just, can you just very clearly outline kind of how this money is being allocated? It's like-for-like? It's money that's already been earmarked? It's not anything coming from the general fund or related to the bond in any way?
Sure. For many, many years, there has been a funding source. There was actually three funding sources that existed for Minnesota public schools to maintain, keep their buildings maintained so they don't fall into disrepair, and it becomes either a safety issue, or quite honestly, a replacement cost issue that's quite substantial compared to a maintenance plan. Those sources were health and safety money that's used to address particularly health and safety issues that are identified by the state, whether it's playground surfaces, bloodborne pathogens, kind of giving the scope of what safety issues are. There was deferred maintenance revenue, which did not exist for us because we were eligible for alternative facilities money. Public schools that weren't big received deferred maintenance, which was a certain set dollar amount based on per pupils. We were fortunate enough to receive alt facilities. To get alternative facilities, we are not allowed, we are restricted to only replace like-for-like. So we cannot take, let's say, a window ventilation system, and all of a sudden, we have an HVAC unit with chillers and that sort of thing going on. Again, the money is intended by the state to maintain the facilities that you have, and also to provide safety to our students, staff, and public. What happened, one legislative session removed, is that the state chose to combine all of the sources and make it kind of a lump sum. And with that lump sum, it gave the smaller districts an opportunity to receive more revenue, and it gave larger districts and everybody, kind of are now following the plan that we were always prescribed to do, which is a tenure plan. You have to lay out what your maintenance plan is and what that looks like. So now, with that, we're doing a resolution and a tenure plan, which we have done, that says kind of, this is what our plan looks like. Obviously, there's alterations. Every year, different things come up. This money is not general fund money. It is money that we do levy our taxpayers for. I would say the most equivalent source of it would be, like, operating capital. Again, it's used for a facility type of situation, or protective gear. And so it can't be used for anything else. We don't have an opportunity to do that. And I think it is fiscally responsible to make sure our buildings are in the best shape that they can be down the road. We aren't discussing multimillion-dollar issues because we did not repair situations or address situations as they came up.
Thank you.
So, Kristen, is it correct that this used to be for 21 schools? Now it's for all schools?
The alternative facility piece, that sounds right.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
So does that terminology go away?
Yes.
With this? So we don't care alternative?
You will continue to hear me, well, you'll hear me transition because I'm still trying to work on that, you know, getting people from what they have heard, and quite honestly, even people that have dealt with it every day, into moving away from calling it alternative facilities and health and safety to long-term facility maintenance. That's the proper term now? Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'll make a motion to approve the long-term facility maintenance plan for 2017-2018.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I just have one question about the carpeting at Rutherford, the one that you're doing. That would have been put in about '98, '99? And that's about the right life? I mean, we are.
Yeah. So it's about 20 years?
Yeah. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, close. Thank you for that, and we are on to certify 2016 payable 2017 property tax levy. Ms. Hoheisel again.
Thank you. Just to preface, please note that the numbers that you will see in this presentation, call it presumptive of me, but I assumed the $350,000 would be added. So when we get to that point in the presentation, know that it's always reflective of the, it's already reflective of the action you've taken. The reason why I did that is because when we go through this and we talk about the overview of the levy and the proposed taxes, and we talk about what are the significant changes, we also have to be aware that what we do today doesn't mean that's what we have to abide by come December. We're still in a preliminary version. There are still adjustments being made. My recommendation would be to certify the maximum because of those adjustments. As a matter of fact, I know that the levy that you're, or the numbers you're looking at now, I know two of those numbers are wrong. I know there's a health and safety component that's wrong, and I know that there's an intermediate lease levy that's wrong. So it allows the state time to gather their information and make sure it's all accurate, and then it allows the school board an opportunity during the truth and taxation hearing to hear from the public and make a decision on if we're going to levy the full amount or if we're going to under levy. And so that's, but what you do tonight sets the top. So if we certify the maximum, that means, you know, we don't go above that. Not necessarily the dollar amount, but we're allowing for that. If we were to pick a dollar amount, that doesn't adjust then past tonight, so hence the recommendation. But you will have one more chance, I guess, is the message. And that will be on December 8. We'll hold that meeting at 6 o'clock and allow the opportunity for the public to sit, speak, before the board takes action. So tonight, you would be looking at, I'd ask you to adopt the preliminary proposed 2016 payable 2017 levy. What that means is this is money that is collected calendar year from our taxpayers. So it starts in January, they pay in May and October. But this is for the 17-18 school year for us. This is revenue for us then. We provide the county and the Department of Education with information. And with the county, we give them our meeting date of when we'll hold our truth and taxation hearing. And then mid-November, residents will receive their tax statement from the county, and they can review what is estimated for the calendar year 17 for their individual situation. This is broken down by the type of levy as far as funds go. So we talk, the three, four components you'll see is the general levy, the community service levy, the debt service levy, and OPEB, which is ultimately debt, too. Two columns, comparison between last year's and this year's estimate. There is not a lot of change. If you look at the bottom line, with the grand total for the general, a year ago was $25,797 million. Today, we're at $26.3 million, an increase. I'll address how this doesn't have an impact in the future, but you can see we were able to do a little bit more with our long-term facility maintenance. Money, operating capital actually went down. That's based on our student counts. Otherwise, I don't see significant changes. The building land lease, again, I know it's off, but our intermediate costs are going up a little bit there, and then some adjustments. We try, trying to get away from having large swings in our prior year adjustment category, and so we're trying to narrow that adjustment down. Community service levies, bottom line, last year was $925,000. This year, it's $941,000. Essentially, it comes down to prior year adjustments. What was off a year ago, and now it's correcting itself as we move into this year. That's the main difference between what's going on with our levies. And then the debt service levy, you can see that in subtotal, total debt service goes from $4.45 million a year ago to $4.779 million. So that's up, but our OPEB debt actually goes down, so they tend to balance themselves out. That's just part of the structure and how our debt works. So here are your totals. And you do have categories. The RMV is your referendum market value. That's what's taxed on residential properties, everything but agricultural land and seasonal land. And then the net tax capacity takes a person's tax rate, you know, depending on how you're classified, times the, oops, lost my terminology, the taxable market value times their class rate. So a residential home is a 1, or a commercial property is a 1, 2, or 1, 5, and that's. So it's split up into various categories, and that's how we receive our money. And if you notice the bottom line, a year ago, we were at $36,594,000 approximately. And this year, currently, in our preliminary, we're at $37,236,000. What does that mean? This is to Tom's question that he had asked when we were talking about the long-term facility maintenance. This is carrying forward all of the impact, and you can see on the home values that everything right now, and again, there's going to be some small adjustments that I, the ones that I knew I actually plugged in and ran in a different scenario when we were still at about $2, you can see every home, every residential homestead is actually going to see at least their school tax impact, a decrease. Now, it assumes that we're going to have, and up in orange, you will see the 1.11, property value appreciation. What that means is we assume that there's going to be growth. We take the referendum market value, which is, you know, again, everything but ag land and seasonal rec land, and it takes away new construction because that increases our base, and says that's going to be your growth. Now, if a home is assessed differently, there's things that we don't control. But knowing that there's going to be growth, knowing at least without a material deviation, which I do not anticipate, this will be in the area of what our taxpayers can expect to see on their statement from the school side of it. And again, there's factors we don't control, but all things being equal. If your neighbor's assessed value goes up and yours goes down, you'll see a greater share of that, but this is the average.
Where does that number come from?
That, the number.
That 1.11%.
That is, again, that's coming from the county. So they say, here's your, back to the referendum market value. Here's kind of the base for the referendum market value, and this is the percentage we've had for new construction. So this is your growth, and that's all coming from the county. So I would request that you accept the levy at the maximum tonight, and then I will be in front of you for final action on December 8, where our taxpayers will have an opportunity to provide input during the truth and taxation meeting.
Kristen, can I ask one question?
Let me do the motion and then. Can I get a motion to certify that 2016 payable 2017 property tax levy?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Amy?
So just, so I'm clear, even setting it or approving it at the max, there would still be, for all the things that we can see, not an individual's home value. It's still a decrease.
Correct.
Okay.
I will say, it's a nuance with how the state is designed. We have now added QCOM, and we did this last year, too, where we actually don't certify the total amount that's available to us. We always under levy because we do not levy for QCOM, and so we'll have to take an official, you know, as part of the final process, you will under levy the levy that's given to us at that time because I'm assuming that we will not be levying for QCOM dollars, but the state presents it that way because it's an opportunity for us to get that money.
And in the time you've been here, we've always under levied?
QCOM has only been available for us two levy cycles.
I mean, generally, generally.
Only, only for QCOM, only the two levy cycles. Otherwise, we've accepted the levy as presented.
Got it.
In my tenure.
Okay.
Earlier, when we were talking, you said that you suspected there were two figures in here that were in error. Does that mean they're larger than you think they're going to end up?
It's, it's actually an offset with.
Against the other?
It is, with the intermediate lease levy. Right now, it's showing up on our levy at approximately, in this levy today, at approximately $308,000, and I want to say the number, that would be our share from 916 would be about $363. That said, the health and safety adjustment is actually a greater negative than what's being presented. And so when I was running those numbers, knowing that they were inaccurate, what you saw on, what I saw on this screen was kind of, instead of the twos, I saw like $2 even. So it was, you know, you're talking a 40 cent swing, but they net each other a little bit. Again, go ahead.
So that far-right column where you've got the decrease in cost, if that's at the maximum, when you come back in December, the only thing that would do, those numbers would get bigger. There'd be more of a decrease.
More savings.
More savings.
I rephrase the question, please. I didn't understand.
Okay. You're talking about savings to homeowners up to a million dollar value. Okay, when you come back in December, if we approve this at the maximum, those figures can only get higher. How would you say it?
More savings.
There can only be more savings, or those numbers, but they can't, that column's suddenly not going to turn black.
I do not anticipate that column.
Well, how could it?
Yeah. Well, so what isn't in your levy, and this is the piece that, again, I'm assuming we're not levying for QCOM. If we were to decide to levy for QCOM, those would actually go black.
Yeah.
Assuming QCOM isn't there, and we don't, we under levy for QCOM during the December meeting. So these numbers, again, there's not going to be, I do not anticipate a material deviation enough to make those numbers black.
Okay. And then I've got a question from your general fund levy one. One of your categories is student achievement, and that looks like it's about cut in half. Can you explain what it is and why it's cut in half?
Yes. So the student achievement levy, and for anybody who was paying attention to this probably decades ago, is the old gen ed formula levy. They used to levy for that money. The state capped it at $20 million, and essentially, they did that as, I would say honestly, to try to give schools more money, but to also balance their budget. They took it off of the aid coffers and said, we're going to allow, we're going to tell districts they can levy for it. It's still a source of revenue. It's a net to the schools, but it saves on the state money the state. So they implemented this three, four years ago, and they said, for the state, we're not going to, we're not going to make anybody collect more than this dollar amount in total. And so what it is, is it's an offset of aid for us. If we were to under levy that category, we actually lose aid. We get penalized if you choose to under levy that category. But it was a swap of finances that the state did legislatively from aid to levy. And they're essentially, I hate to say that they're forcing you to do it, but they're penalizing you if you don't do it. What I would gather, based on the decrease, is our share of the state's $20 million has decreased. Because as our student population goes down, if there's other student population, you know, the pool is 20 million, and it gets split proportionately across the state of Minnesota, my, I would assume some are going up, we just happen to be going down. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Preliminary request, because this, like you said, is preliminary.
Preliminary.
We vote on in December. But if you go to pages three through five, realizing I might have the oldest set of eyes in the room.
No.
Could we put those on bigger? I can read these comfortably. I can't read.
No, the present, absolutely, absolutely.
Anything else? All those in favor of certifying the 2016 payable 2017 property tax levy, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, close. Thank you. Thank you. We will recess to a learning session, I guess, at this point. Do we need a motion and a second for that, or can we just do it?
We can just recess.
Okay. We will recess to a learning session.